And I'd like to call this meeting to order the day of our March the tenth, two thousand twenty-two, Board of Supervisors meeting and welcome everybody here today. Everybody is here in the courtroom unless everybody is in the virtual world. Now, first item on the agenda is the indication and Pastor Lee Farmer. Good afternoon.
May I offer a prayer? Gracious God, thank you for the opportunities and blessings to live in such a wonderful community. Thank you for our Board of Supervisors who conduct our business. We pray your blessings and guidance upon them tonight. We pray for our world. We need peace. I pray these things in the precious name of your son. Amen.
Thank you. Next is Pledge of Allegiance. All stand. Mr. Shirley, would you mind leading us into the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Mr. Shirley. All right. Next item is the approval of the agenda. We have any changes or additions to the agenda?
I'm moved that we approve it.
All right, I have a motion to have a second.
A second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye. All right. All right, we have the next item is the approval of the minutes and these are the minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. And next item on the list is the resolution honoring Wellington H. Shirley, Jr.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a resolution here tonight in recognition of Wellington H. Shirley, Jr. Whereas Mr. Wellington H. Shirley, Jr. dedicated eight years of public service as District Two member of the Northumberland County Planning Commission. And the same Mr. Shirley served as Deputy Zoning Administrator, followed by zoning administrator for fifteen years prior to taking on the membership of the commission. And the same Mr. Shirley entered into retirement in two thousand thirteen and chose to continue his public service to the community by being an active member of the Planning Commission. And the same Mr. Shirley always showed his deepest concern for the welfare of Northumberland County and its citizens through his membership on the commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deepest appreciation for his loyal and faithful service to the county and its citizens and wishes for him much happiness in the future. And be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby adopted on this day, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this.
To move.
All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Shirley?
Shirley, it's a pleasure and an honor to send you this. And you've done a lot of support to all of us here, especially myself over the years, helping me with all kinds of things. Appreciate you, sir, on the planning. I appreciate all the good you do, sir.
Thank you, W H.
All right. Our next item on the list is a resolution for the Volunteer Fire Department in celebration of seventy-five years of service. It'd be Fairfield Fire Department, I'm sorry. Ted Luck, you want to read that one, sir?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department was established on January thirtieth, nineteen forty-seven, when R. L. Haney appointed the dedicated group of individuals and efforts to serve as their chairman. And whereas the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department elected officers on February twelfth, nineteen forty-seven, with seventeen original charter members. And Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department first housed a fire truck in a service station in Reedville, in Reedville, constructed a substation at Gleep Point in nineteen fifty-seven, and constructed a new building in Reedville in nineteen eighty-five. And Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department has thirty-nine members, nine vehicles, and has run numerous calls throughout their years of public service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors expresses their greatest appreciation to the many volunteers and congratulates Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department on its seventy-fifth anniversary. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be presented to the Fire Chief of Fairfield's Volunteer Fire Department, Philip Keizer, to commend them on being such an essential part of Northumberland County's first responders.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. Some more?
Philip, who was the last charter number eleven? Was that Snapp?
Yes.
Snapp Robson? When he passed away was the last living charter member. I don't think that. Thank you.
All right, our next item is a proclamation for Red Cross Month.
Yes, sir. Whereas President Franklin Roosevelt first proclaimed American Red Cross Month in March nineteen forty-three. And since then, every president has called on Americans to support the organization's humanitarian mission. And the American Red Cross has been helping people prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies for more than one hundred thirty years. And the American Red Cross is celebrating and recognizing the everyday heroes in our community, those who helped their neighbors by giving blood volunteering or making a financial contribution. And therefore be it proclaimed that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of March twenty-twenty-two as American Red Cross Month in Northumberland County, and urges all citizens to support the programs and services of local American Red Cross organizations by giving blood through volunteerism, assisting with fundraising efforts, and donating to the organization by becoming an everyday hero.
All right. Make a motion to approve this. All right, motion to second to approve this. All those in favor say aye. Anyone here today?
I'm not sure if we're going to be able to be present.
Okay. All right, and next item is All Points Broadband. Is anyone here tonight or are they going to be virtual tonight?
They were going to join virtually, I believe.
All right.
Hello, yes, we're here to join virtually and give an update on the regional project and the progress we've been making in Northumberland. Share the screen here.
Who, who is this speaking tonight?
This is Tom Ennis with All Points Broadband.
All right, Mr. Ennis.
I think the host needs to, the host needs to give me the ability to share the screen.
Ted Luck, thank you, God. All right, Mr. Ennis, you can go ahead and start.
Okay. So, thank you for letting me participate remotely. I know it's kind of a last minute request and I appreciate that. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Let's just go through the slide. I can see what's on the screen, so let's go to the next slide. So as a reminder about All Points Broadband, we're a Virginia-based rural broadband company operating four states. In each of the past several years, we've been honored to be on America's list of the five thousand fastest-growing companies. In two thousand twenty-one, we received several hundred million dollars on behalf of our partner jurisdictions through state and federal grants and electric utility co-investment to deliver universal fiber to the home to unserved locations. Last year, we brought on a new lead equity sponsor called Searchlight Capital Partners through their investment in All Points and several other fiber-to-the-home ISPs. They are the number four builder of fiber-to-the-home in the country. Also, a big deal for us and for our partner counties last year was securing the fiber manufacturing capacity and inventory stocking for all of our projects, specifically on the Northern Neck and in other Virginia areas. There are ongoing issues with the supply chain, as we are all unfortunately familiar with, but we have been successful in securing not only the inventory, but actually manufacturing capacity for fiber and related items. Many of you are aware of this. I just want to do a background for those members of the public who are in the audience. Let's go to the next slide. So we're going to go through a quick overview of how we got here and how we secured the funding and development for the fiber-to-the-home network. We'll show a map and some bullet points about the Northumberland Network and give an update on the Dominion Middle Mile construction, which has been a key to getting the network deployed. And then we'll go through a couple of the next steps in bringing service to Northumberland. So let's go to the next slide, please. All right, so if we remember back in two thousand twenty, four counties on the Northern Neck joined together for a regional broadband initiative. That year, we brought in partnerships with Dominion and the Northern Neck Electric Co-op and applied for a VADI grant, which is the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. Later in two thousand twenty, we were, or in the beginning of two thousand twenty-one, we were provisionally awarded a little over ten million dollars for that first half of the project. And shortly thereafter were provisionally awarded federal money of over eight million dollars for the regional project. In late two thousand twenty-one, we received a approval to commence construction on that area. And then in December of two thousand twenty-one, we were again provisionally awarded more VADI money for the second half of the regional project. And in Northumberland, that was primarily in Oyster Point. That, the contract for that phase of the VADI award is still being developed, but we have been provisionally awarded. Most recent milestones that we've achieved in February and March are highlighted here. We have Dominion Energy Virginia actually commencing construction of the Middle Mile Fiber in Northumberland. And in March, some of you have seen the right-of-way and pole attachment crews out there verifying the right-of-way plans and plats. And then on the pole attachment, they're verifying the heights of existing infrastructure and beginning the make-ready process there. This is, but unfortunately, it's not the same crews that right now are installing the, so I lost my place, the fiber-to-the-home install to the customer premise, but they are out there doing work on the Middle Mile. To date, we have, I just checked today, seven hundred and seventeen locations in Northumberland that have pre-registered. If you are a resident in or near the, the project area, we strongly encourage you to go to fiber allpointsbroadband.com. You can go there and verify whether or not you're in this specific VADI project. You can answer several questions about service that you may have tried to receive in the past. You can change the exact location on your property where you want service to be delivered. There's no obligation for signing up for service, but this is a way to pre-register and sign up for future communications. We can go to the next slide, please. So here is the updated map of the network in Northumberland. Over two thousand currently unserved locations in the county will be served by this network. And in addition to the, the last mile and the drops, we're going to add, you know, over three hundred miles of Middle Mile fiber to be constructed in the county. And all of those, those dots on there are unserved locations included in the project. And the, the lines on the map, other than the county lines, are fiber deployment. So we can go to the next slide. This is the update on the Middle Mile infrastructure. So Dominion Energy Virginia's Middle Mile fiber construction is underway. You will be seeing their crews and their contractors working on Middle Mile fiber construction. There are about seventy-five miles of fiber released to construction and are in various stages of the construction process. This will continue to ramp up dramatically for the first half of two thousand twenty-two. And we will update, update the county when future segments are released as well. I know that in terms of updates, our OSP construction team met with several representatives from the county last week to verify some unserved locations, check on construction status. That is something that we plan to do in the future as well. And as we get closer to lighting customers in the coming months, we will schedule more site visits with county representatives. We can go to the next slide here. So the next steps, coming up pretty soon, the regional broadband grant management team will have a regular meeting on March twenty-second, where we update all of the stakeholders on the Northern Neck about the status of the Phase One and Phase Two VADI program and the status of the grant administration. We will continue to coordinate through the Northern Neck Planning District Commission. There's a punch list for getting under contract for the current VADI award. Some of these items include a final budget, a grant administration agreement, the construction plan, the project management plan. It's a number of items to deliver to the agency that oversees this grant. Also, through the Planning District Commission, we continue the grant compliance and reporting for the previous year's VADI award. The agency has come out with more monthly reporting metrics that we will keep track of and report through the Planning District Commission. All of that data will be available on the agency's website in the coming months as a dashboard for residents, not only in the area, but across the state to check the progress on these grant awards. Dominion will continue their deployment of Middle Mile throughout the next couple of quarters this year and continue to ramp up this quarter and, and build through the third quarter. So All Points is planning to install customers in Northumberland in the third quarter of two thousand twenty-two. And in advance of that, if you have pre-registered on the fiber allpointsbroadband.com website or if you see a yard sign or a door hanger or a mailer, you, you will know when you can sign up for service. The way that service will be called lit will, will be through fiber distribution areas. And we will notify all homeowners in the fiber distribution area when they can sign up, all the details of the plans and the construction timeline well in advance of making a decision. The, as far as the overall regional project, we had a, a late start, but we are on schedule to be completed as originally described, Q four of next year. And we're very happy with the progress that we've made recently and will continue to make progress on fiber construction. That is what the prepared presentation is. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
All right, anyone from the board having any questions? All right, Mr. Ted Luck, you have any questions? Mr. Ennis, it looks like everybody doesn't have any questions. Tommy?
Yes.
Right. Oh, oh, you want presentation? Yeah. I was going, yeah. I don't think anybody has any questions. It was a very good presentation.
Okay, well, thank you all very much and you all have a nice evening.
All right, you did the same, sir. You need a minute? All right, our next item on the agenda is the update from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Good to see you here.
I see you all.
Hey, Todd.
David couldn't make it here tonight, but he did send, send you all a packet of some things that's been going on after we got over the snow in January and February chasing potholes and this and that. We're cutting a lot of brush here lately. We've had a pine tract crew up in the Monday Point, live the whole area, cutting some trees and doing some trimming up in that area, too. We're also, they're starting to let inmate crews back out now. So we were lucky to get them end of February, first of March, and we've been having them pick up trash on, on the primary roads. So, weather permitting, they will, they will continue to do that over the next two or three weeks. He also sent you all, it looks like we got quite a bit of paving going to be going on this year. The first page there is all the surface treatment roads that'll be done this year. That's a tar and stone. Then we've also got quite a bit of paving on primary this year. Two oh one courthouse from Knights Run back to Eastfield. All of Eastfield, you know, all the curve we go through the town. Also from Cedar Point down to, um, down through, through, all the way through Burgess down to Greenfield will also be paved. Finish up Remo Road where we ended up last year. And, and then also Whole Neck Road from three sixty down past Mob Net where the pavement starts there. So that whole section will then be paved also. Lewis Sutter Road will be finishing the, another section of that with the Cape Seal. Other than that, that's all I have. You all got anything?
Just on Light Street. You have one of those yellow signs.
Curves on?
Yeah.
Down?
In the ditch, I understand, in the ditch. Also, I was sitting at Mill Point Road. There was a sign leaning and also a blue sign. Also on London Hallback Road.
Whole Nick, okay.
Yeah. On the blue signs, kind of leaning. So if you can check those, I should appreciate it. That's all I have.
Jeff, you have anything? Yeah. Tom?
Warren, I see there's going to be some more planting. I hope whoever does this gets their act together over last year.
I hope so, too. I understand there's been several meetings already this year with what happened last year.
Like David, doesn't improve it, it's going to be a lot of work. Now you deal with three sixty. It's carried in more than two hundred. On two hundred, Jesse Dupont, in the, I think it's in the two, the old Lee Point Road, the last one, the one closest to Lee Point. There are two pine trees that are dead and the bark is coming off right next to the road. I'll see if I can find some time to tie some red ribbon around it. Because the problem is, you know, if they want to off the bark, they're getting ready to fall.
Think it will fail down?
Yeah. That's, I mean, they're, they're going to go across those lanes.
Oh, yeah. Brad?
Three sixty in front of easily concrete, the rough spot on the road is headed to one village. Have y'all looked at it yet?
Yes, I have. Moving right down, choose a well break. About when the machine ever did build up places there.
It's, it, you know, like I said, some of the EMS folks said it's kind of hard on folks on the stretcher table to the hospital.
They have got those signs up.
Yeah, yes. So I got.
I have one thing for you. Right here Farm Bureau, right here Farm Bureau here in Eastfield, the boards that are setting up on the side of the road if it's so called. Think you can?
I contacted the person they belong to and they assured me they were going to build them up soon.
I want, what, soon? I know. I know. I'm just waiting.
During the snow.
Yeah, that's what I figured, hit it during the snow. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I do, do have one thing.
Hold on a sec.
I'm not sure if David had mentioned anything to you, but he sent me an email and he was talking about the secondary six-year plan. And the code of Virginia allows counties to approve a plan every other year once the adoption of the original plan has occurred. And we did that last year in two thousand twenty-one. The county and VDOT were able to hold a public hearing in two thousand twenty-one, which means that the plan can remain in place until two thousand twenty-three. At this time, the funding allocation for fiscal year twenty-three is about forty thousand. There are two roads that we will have to construct over the next several years. There will be approximately one hundred and eighty thousand in unpaid road funds and telefees that can be used to identify a new project next year. Since we have already prioritized the roads to hard surface with limited funding over the next several years, there's no urgency or obligation to update the secondary six-year plan this year. And he is asking if the board would want to hold off until next year to have a public hearing or if you want to proceed, board, this year withholding the second, secondary six-year plan.
It's a pleasure to board. Put it off? Put it off, Mr. Ted Luck?
Oh, I can let Mr. Charlie up you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item is Sheriff Beecham, update on, from the radio committee.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Happy to report that we received two proposals from L three Harris, one for just Northumberland joining and the other for Northumberland and Lancaster County to join as a group. The radio committee will be meeting on March twenty-third at six P M. To discuss both proposals and the representative from L three Harris will be there as well.
Board members got any questions for Sheriff Beecham?
If Lax to join, will that be any cost savings to Northumberland?
On paper, right now, it looks like it will be.
Paper's nice, but I want to see the real thing.
So, uh, this, the only proposal we received in the beginning was Northumberland-Lancaster. And of course, I emailed back, where is Northumberland's proposal? That came in substantially higher. But the conversation I had with L three Harris is to sharpen the pencil with the degree. So I don't know how much that's going to come down, but there is going to be some cost savings by going as a group.
If it's a joint like from the Fumland, is that going to have a chance to tie into the Good Luck Tower?
Yes, so by the proposal, Lancaster will pick up the Good Luck Tower, which would drop us back three towers, saving some money.
Oh, that tower has real good coverage.
Yes. Yes. You're welcome.
All right, anybody else got any questions? Tadlock?
No, sir, I don't have any questions.
All right. Sheriff Beecham, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have an update from the Northumberland County School, school system. I know there's some items in their board docs. Anyone from the school board like to comment on anything?
Everyone received them in their email.
Yes.
Okay. If you got any questions, board and write to the board.
All right. Thank you. All right. That's all our presentations. The next item on the agenda is the county administrator's report. Mr. Tadlock, I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the February twenty twenty-two building permits report, we had six new structures. Total construction cost for the month is four point five million. Total construction cost year to date is eight point seven million, which is about one million dollars above this time last year. Next item I have is there is a supplemental appropriation request. Thirty-seven thousand, six seventy-nine and nine cent for Title Four grant proceeds. Thirty-six thousand dollars for the Virginia Tiered System of Supports. And two thousand, three hundred and one dollars and seven cent Title Three State Consortium Grant. These are the supplemental appropriation monies. We had previously invited, asked for additional information. And Mr. Bellis had provided that information, the grant applications. This would go to the instructional line item of the school budget.
Board members got any comment?
Do you need a motion? I would, this is a supplemental appropriation, so yes, sir, we need a motion. I'm moved that we approved a request.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
All right, Mr. Tadlock. All right, next item is another school supplemental appropriation in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cent. And this is for the McKinney Vento A R P homeless Asser Fund Grant. This is, would be a split line item. Three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cent would go to instruction. And four thousand, two hundred dollars would go to transportation. And Mr. Bellis had included the supporting documentation on that as well.
All right. My pleasure, the board.
Move, we approve it.
Second. All right, we got a motion in a second. Any other comment on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Next item is a supplemental appropriation for the Sheriff's Department. And this is in the amount of seven hundred dollars for reimbursement of ballgames at the school. And it would go to budget line item thirty-one oh two dash one thousand and six.
All right, pleasure to board, move that approved. We got a motion, have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is the health insurance. We did see an increase in health insurance of approximately ten point five percent this year. One thing that we have tried to do over the last several years is we've continued to try and contribute more towards the dual and the family plans. This year, we are recommending that the employees' costs remain the same as they are currently paying. Which ultimately has that higher percentage of county paying more, so providing more of a percentage coverage. And we're estimating that the cost to the county would be an additional one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to do that. And if the board wishes to move forward, I would need two different motions on that. This year, the COVID rates are different from the, the other regular rates.
All right, you want to have any questions from Mr. Tadlock on to?
How many employees need to cope?
It's less than five. It's not very many. So the first motion we need is. So the, the first motion that I would need is to approve the fiscal year twenty-three local choice renewal rates as presented. With no change to the employee contribution cost.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye. Next motion.
The next motion I would need is to approve the fiscal year twenty-three local choice renewal rates for COVID rates as presented with full premium cost to eligible participants.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have been working on the dispatch mapping system upgrades. The mapping maintenance does end October of this year. And I placed some information in the board packet, but I would like to hold off on any action and I'd like to bring that back to the board in April. Mr. Headley, IT Administrator had reached out and asked some additional questions and we're waiting for some answers on that, so. It does take approximately sixty to ninety days for implementation. So we're trying to, I know Jennifer was here.
Yeah.
Ms. Packet's here, Dispatch Supervisor. One thing that we're trying to avoid is, I know they're also in the process of doing the CAD upgrades. So we don't want both of those come and do at the same time, so. I'll bring that back at the next meeting and have it updated for you. All right, then. Next item I have is we did receive the DQ WQIF grant in the amount of two point one million dollars. And I would just need a motion to accept those grant monies with providing me the authorization to sign that, that grant. And that does provide us the additional monies that we needed for, to complete the rebuild project. So move.
All right, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you seconded then. Mr. Long. Okay, thank you. Just an update on Reedville-Cali wastewater project. I know Mr. Willard has been working hard with the contractor and Rob Magrum, the engineer. And he's been updating us on the, the, the progress of that. And he sent information the other day that Dutchland is scheduled to set the walls for the new S B R digester. That was between March sixteenth and eighteenth, so it's in. I don't know if you have any, any other questions. I put Mr. Willard back on the spot again, if you have any specific questions for him.
Board members have any comments for Mr. Will? Or for Mr. Will to have anything he wants to say to the board?
Good evening, I want to touch up on what, I guess that's not all. Oh, yeah, Luxo said that the, the treatment facilities, the, the S B R and digest to pay it was poured two weeks ago. They slaved, set the walls next week. All the fencing and gates have been finalized, so right now they've been mobilizing more equipment in and doing some land work, but there has been a problem getting some piping and things of that nature. But other than that, we're doing pretty good on schedule on that, so. Y'all have any question on sanitary district itself?
Any board members got any questions? No, don't think so.
Other than that, we're still working on some of the capital improvement projects. I spoke with the, the back truck vendor and that chassis is still slated to be in June. We signed off on the drawings for the tank, so everything's going smooth with that. Manhole rehab project is slated to start in the month, last two to three weeks. And we're in the process right now of having those two pump stations worked on with the pumps that were approved, but you see I've been playing, so. It's been a busy, busy month. So, going to stay busy.
But it's moving in the right direction.
Moving in the right direction, yeah. Thank you.
Always good. Thank you.
Next item I have. We just received our health insurance rates along with the V R S rates, and we're putting that information into the budget. So we are continuing to compile the information on the budget and, or the county budget. And we will get that to the board as soon as we can. Next item I have is we have received a request by the friends of the Northumberland Animal Shelter to exempt them from the real estate personal property taxes. This does require a public hearing, so I don't know if the board would like to have the public hearing at next month's meeting.
My pleasure, the board.
Do it next month?
We'll put it on next month's agenda? All right. You want a motion to do that, Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir.
Second. All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Next item I have is the board had requested the actuarial study for the EMS hazardous duty. We have received that report. And if implemented, the V R S rate would change from ten point sixteen percent to twelve point four seven percent on the total county payroll. I don't need any action on this specific item tonight. What I would like to do is place this in the budget so that it can be considered as an overall item. And if, if the board chooses to move forward with it, there is a resolution that the board would have to adopt. And we had, in the actuarial process, we had noted if, if the board chooses to move forward with it at July first start date. And the latest that the board could do that resolution or adopt that resolution would be at the June Board of Supervisors meeting.
But the multiplier would apply to the total county payroll, not just the employees would be covered?
That's correct. Yeah.
Can you give us a breakdown? I need your budget process. Total employees versus the number of employees would be covered under that?
Yes, sir. The last item I have is, I believe Mr. Long had a nominee, Clarence Dammer. That's right. For the anti-lyrical committee. We just need to put it on there.
All right. Second. You made the motion, I made the motion. All right, we have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The next is board of supervisor items. We have the approval of the check register?
Move that we approve.
All right.
My second.
All right, have a second, motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have board comments. Mr. Tomlin?
I have no comment.
Mr. Brian?
Only comment I got, it was just nice to have the school board here tonight and I appreciate them meeting with.
It was very nice to have him here. Mr. Jeff?
There I go. I've had a couple phone calls this week concerning a trash dumpster down there, the brush behind the fence. And people were requesting that it be open more days of the week this time of year when people are cleaning yards and so forth. So what could we do if we did to do anything with that? What is it on that?
I, I have to go back and look at the contract to see what was specifically stated in that. And I can get with Mr. Gregory.
They, they control the brush behind it, you know? I thought we had somebody to watch that.
You're talking about the, at Horsehead? Yeah.
Yeah, behind the fence where the brush goes.
Right, we, we contract with Rightway on the.
Oh, Rightway?
Right.
Oh, he's, I thought you don't waste money.
No.
Yeah, because there's some people like says, seen a lot on the road, people coming and going this time of year to clean your yards and stuff. You know, for the next couple of months or so.
We can check into that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, what happened in those years past when we unfortunately had tropical systems and had a lot of trees down, did they open it up then and how was that contract ended?
There's a provision in the contract for natural disasters.
All right, Mr. Long?
I'm still waiting on the, get those signs up.
Okay. I'll get with Mr. Albright.
Okay. And also have we had in an office for the supermarket up there, Calio?
I'm not sure. I'd heard that it was up for sale again, but I'm not aware of the, that's probably, so I'm not sure what, who, who has that in him.
All right. If no one has, else has any more board comments? The next item is I need a motion to go into closed meeting.
You want me to read it?
Yeah.
I need a motion for the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors being in closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight, three. For the discussion or consideration of potential acquisition of real property for public purpose or the potential disposition of publicly held real property or discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, county attorney. Because they are being necessary in their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Boya's section two point two, three, seven, one, two.
I move what Tadlock said.
All right, I'll second. I got a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will go next door, so y'all keep your seat. You do not have to leave. We'll be back here in a, in a few. Ladies, we'll call this back to order here and I entertain a motion to come out of closed meeting.
So move. Second.
All right, have a motion, second, come into closed meeting. All those in favor say aye. And so also entertain another motion that we did not discuss anything that we were not supposed to, and you have the proper language for it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Need a motion for the Northumberland Board of Supervisors to return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting with her. And as were identified in the motion for the ending of closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered during the closed meeting. I move that we do what Mr. Tadlock said.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second. Now I'll take a roll call vote. Start with Mr. Tomlin.
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jett, Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Hanny, aye. All right. Now ladies and gentlemen, we will open our public hearings for tonight. Our first item is a motion we had tabled from February the 10th meeting. That's a consideration to amendment to the North Hillman County Code. Mr. Tadlock, I think that is your, your item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We did hold the public hearing on this matter last month. So we, that's been carried over to this month. And staff did meet treasurer, commissioner revenue, Mr. Basie, assistant county administrator, myself, and that with Ms. Kirby and Mr. Thomas. And in looking at this further at this point, and I know Ms. Kirby, I think was here, she's sitting in the back there. At this point, we would recommend holding off and let staff evaluate further and see what other options we may have as far as getting word out sooner and different items like that. If we need to, we can bring this matter back to the board. And at that time, we would have to re-advertise it, of course. But at this point in time, that's our recommendation. I don't know if you have any specific questions for
the board members. Do you have any questions on it?
If you're talking about bringing it back, would that be for not this coming back to twenty twenty-three, this year? But that be for future?
That would be for future. I think at this point, it, it would be too late in the game to try and get anything for this.
That's what I thought. Just want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else having comments or questions?
I'm fine with it.
Ms. Kirby, you have anything you want to comment on about it or?
Glad to hear that. Yes, sir. I'm just curious if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Tadlock, you have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to our next item then. Tadlock, that one is yours also.
Yes, sir. The next public hearing is consideration of amendment to Chapter Nine Election Districts and Precincts of the North Hillman County Code to reestablish boundary lines for the election districts and precinct boundaries. The proposed redistricting plan will affect all the election districts, but not the current polling places. You do have a copy of the proposed changes in board docs. If you have any questions, staff can try and answer those for you.
All right. Any board members have any comments for open the public hearing?
I do. I want to get to the, if I can find it, which one it is, the section. Down, it's in my district. And I talked to the lady that it's going to affect, there's only two houses in that new area that it's going to affect. And one of the ladies has very disturbed. She's even lived there all her life, voted there all her life, and she's very disturbed. I don't see the purpose of taking that one of the second, it was two houses. There you go.
Anyone else have a comment? If you look at District Two, which is my district, I am losing half of Calio on up three sixty, on up to Azalea Lane. So it's all the Altown and all, on back over to the, to the swamp that goes down at Calio Hill. So I'm losing a large chunk of my district.
I believe all is.
No.
No.
You're not losing any, Long.
It's just District Two and District Five and District Four. Well. According to the minute, this was the best solution. Tadlock, do you have any other comments you want to say before we open the public hearing?
The, the thing that we were looking at there, of course, those districts that areas were removed and placed in other districts, we had to, we had a target population that we were trying to, to reach. And the, the area in that was plus or minus five percent.
Yes, sir.
So that, that was the reasoning for some of the modifications there. We did look at, I think we got up to plan eight different plans that we were looking at with the, the committee there. So if there, you have any specific questions, we can certainly try to answer those.
All right. Any board members have any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. And the sign up sheet, we have Lynn Stewart. Lynn Stewart. Come on up, Miss Stewart.
Scared it.
Magnetic personnel. I want to talk a little bit about the school budget.
We on the.
Aw, man.
We on the zoning right now. I mean, not the zoning, but the redistricting. We on the redistricting.
Oh, I'm not on redistricting.
Yes, we are.
Well, I didn't mean to sign.
All right, that's what you signed up for.
I signed up for school.
All right, you can get to that later then. All right. Anyone here tonight like to comment on the redistricting? No one wants to comment? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment? All right, since no one wants to comment, I'll close the public hearing and I'll bring it back before the board. All right, board members got any other questions or what's your pleasure?
Well, my pleasure is to take the recommendations from the committee. I'm going to pull, pull, what they, what they came up with. I believe each committee has something I'd rather than do.
Any other board members got any comments?
I'm not going to support that. And the review of that section, which seems out to one thing. But I don't see the idea of taking that one little corner with two houses. Don't know how many people live down those, maybe three people total.
Tomlin, you got any questions for someone who affects you?
My concern is obviously the part that affects District Four is almost like a fist going down there and pulling out a lot of people. But when I look at the actual number of registered voters in District Four and District Five, using the February statistics for just active voters, not total, the total number of active voters in district registered is two thousand two hundred and eighty-four. District Four or Five is two thousand two hundred and fifty-six. It's so close to the ideal number that obviously there's a lot of growth going on in that area. And if you look in the other registrations in just the active, District One, this is the current district, of course. District One, sixteen thirty. District Two, nineteen seventy-six. District Three, seventeen oh three. And we saw the building permit reports last year. And this year, there's a lot of growth. And then the end of year report showed it in Fairfield and Wacoma district. That's where your growth was. We're always supposed to be under Baker versus Carr, one man, one vote. We know the census was off last time. So the growth is in this area. Since I've been on this board, I've lost area that used to go down part of Fairport Road. We lost that the last time. And the other thing is, the other standard we're supposed to use is compact and contiguous. I looked at this map, whenever we started to now, it's still not compact and contiguous in my mind. The area that's, and I'm not trying to get rid of my people I represent, but if you look at compact and contiguous, the part over Malibu Bay Santos Wharf is not contiguous to District Four, other than magically going across the wharf. At least the Glee Point area is connected by a bridge, and that's clearly allowed by code and by court cases. And I just, when I come with my road, Sandy Point Road, as soon as I hit the intersection of Mala, those people from there, all the way to Wacoma Church are in, now they'll be in District Three by this plan. The numbers, if you went by Plan Four, it's the numbers for District Four as far as total persons is two thousand, two thousand two hundred and seventy-five. That's still so close to the actual what registers on. That's the problem I see. And I just have concerns about pulling to match up certain things. I think this is done for one reason. We all know what it is. And is it absolutely necessary? So I have concerns about this plan. Well, you have concerns, but if it's changed, it's going to affect somebody else, too. I mean, why not? What, what do we have a committee for? They are committed, but we make the decision. Okay, but hey. I don't pass this buck. This is a buck that has to stop right here. Gerrymandering or redistricting, whatever word you want to use, is the most political thing in the world. And we saw that the General Assembly couldn't do it. So it went by the redistricting piece. So they went to Supreme Court. But I just look at it, it's, it's people in, from Wacoma Church down almost to the end or halfway to Miles, they will now come to Wacoma Church instead of turning left to go to the Wacoma Parish Church, will now have to go over to Wacoma, I mean, excuse me, Fairfield Methodist Church to vote. And we know the price again, it makes, I don't want to do anything to discourage people from voting. I believe in letting people vote if they want to vote. I encourage people to vote. But I just have concerns about my district in particular. I know what Marley is saying, two people, it happens. But I, I'm not sure the, the broad impact of two people. I don't have a problem removing those two. They are obviously up in the District One, District Two. There's obviously some impacts. But the population of the county was the highest in two thousand and ten, and it's now going down. And so the numbers are going to continually shrink if the trends hold. We don't know what the actual is. But I'm just, like I said, the actual registrate of voters is what concerns me the most.
I don't know. I know I'm losing, I'm losing a pretty good sized little chunk out. And I'm not saying that it won't be served well, Mr. Brand. I'm not saying that, but I got quite a few friends in that area. I'm just saying, I can see a voter that would put Calio all in one district instead of split it. I think that's the only advantage to it. But it's been like that for over thirty years. What's the pleasure, the board then?
Good question, Mr. Tadlock. Did we meet the qualifications for any redistricting or not requirement or anything?
You mean as far as numbers?
Yeah.
For each of those districts?
No, we were out of parameters on those districts.
How soon do you need a decision, Mr. Tadlock?
Yep, today.
I, I know probably by, by seven thirty tonight is probably when you need it.
Code said December the thirty-first last year.
Yeah, but we're not the only county that has had problems. And we have taken that time because the state took their time doing, getting the information to us.
It was the state, it wasn't the state.
Oh, that's right, the state, I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom. So, and I know there are other counties around that has still not made a decision.
City of Richmond is Black Call, hadn't done theirs yet.
Yeah.
There's April.
Counties and cities, too.
Well, I tell you, I'm concerned about North Hillman first. As simple as that. And it's like I said, I don't see any sense that I'm a committee. They worked hard to make sure this redistricting, this is fast that they could come up with. And I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for it. I mean, we shouldn't have had to commit it if we wanted to make the final decision. And I think that made a good decision.
One of the things that we were considering is trying to make them as minimal changes as, as possible. And of the, the different plans that we had, this one had the least number of modifications to the districts.
What about Plan Four?
It's been a while since I've.
Plan Four obviously has the Calio impact and possibly the Jets area, but it did not go down into off Remo, Boogin' X and Mile.
Yeah, I think they were looking at the, on that particular plan was the majority minority district.
I'm saying that, but the courts have, instead, you don't, you're not guaranteed, you just need to have some ability to have an influence. And the courts are going away from majority minority to more influence district. The case in District of the Congressional District Three, Bobby Cox District, they went away from that.
Well, I will say one thing. I know my person that I put on the board worked. I know she worked. She did an excellent job, and I was proud of her. And I still am proud of her, even though it turned out. I know she did the best she could do.
I'm not, I'm not questioning mine either.
I'm not questioning mine. No, I'm not. I would put her right back here again anytime.
I told them that I gave them no parameters on what to recommend.
Yep. I just hate to, I just hate to lose Calio. I really do. But like I said, I think it will be served, served okay.
I will make sure you get just as many complaints as I get.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Thank you.
I will add you to the email list.
Well, you're certainly welcome to do that.
I don't want you to feel left out.
Because, yeah, you're certainly welcome to do that. Because really, if you get complaints, we should all hear the same complaint because we all have to deal with. They're all citizens of the county, and we deal with everybody. We don't just deal with one district.
That's true.
That's the way it should be.
Everybody has the same vote in this county, has a right to not the same vote, has a right to vote. And we're gonna support, when we make our vote, it's for everybody in this county, it's not just for our district.
That's right.
But just like I said, it's just, I hate to lose that area, but. Does everybody wanna table it till next month and make a decision then, give you a chance to think of it a little bit more?
Why you wanna table? Why you wanna table, and we have these people working hard? I'm not in favor.
I know that. I'm just, I'm just putting a suggestion out there. And that's what we do. We put suggestions out, not just one way, we have multiple ways.
Mr. Chairman, what we could do is, if the board wished to do so, we could, um, I know the registrar's office is, uh, they have more of a deadline, I guess, than, than anybody else in getting notifications out. And they do have a June primary this year. Um, yeah, I understand that. I, I don't know if it was something, you do have a motion on the table. If it's something that the board wished that staff go through, the, the different maps that we went through with the, um, the committee, and maybe that would rather explain, I guess, what we, what the committee reviewed to the board. Um, and then that would provide you the information as far as other options that we, we did consider. But I would recommend that meeting occur fairly, fairly soon, before the next regular scheduled meeting.
You'd like to have that within a week, or two at the max, correct?
I would, if you get with Mr. McKenzie and other staff, Mr. Basie, and look at, of course, the board schedule, make sure that everybody is here available.
I guess it's gonna come down to what to, Mr. Tom and Mr. Jett, which I wanna do. I'm not thrilled, but I hate to lose it, but. And I want everybody satisfied.
I'm not the one, I worry with my people, that I've gotta ride by every day.
And. Tom, I believe all of us, that's affect all of us. I've got good friends in every district, and I would love for them to vote for me, but you can't have everybody.
I'm not saying that, but I think.
I mean, I'm still sticking with a good word that all the committees done. And everybody had a chance to put a person on there.
It has nothing to do with the committee. It's our decision.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, but they made the decision that they thought was best.
But when I look at, because the committee wanted to increase the percentage of minority.
Yes, right.
That also then correspondingly reduces it everywhere else. By the plan as presented, I'm down to less than ten percent minority voters. Mr. Jett has almost eleven percent. District One has twenty percent plus in District Two. It's packing or diluting. That's what redistricting, gerrymandering does. And I have to wonder, are we working towards by diluting it in the other districts? Best for District Three and Four, I mean, Four and Five.
I don't see it that way. That's your decision. That's what, that's how you say it, I don't.
We have a motion on the floor. Mr. Jett? We have a motion on the floor.
I didn't make one.
I made one.
You made a motion, yep.
Yeah, he made one, I made one.
Motion doesn't require a second. When I'll call that we vote for, we vote on this motion one way or the other. If that's all right with the rest of the board. All right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll make a motion that we carry this over for. Tadlock, how long?
I would, uh, yeah. Well, you've got planning commission. You can answer it.
What day, what day of this month do you wanna meet on?
Well, your committee would have to, pardon.
Committee's gonna have to meet, but we're gonna have to meet too. And I think Mr. Tadlock said he wanted it in about two weeks.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I agree with him on that.
Well, I guess that would be the question, is the, um, board wishes to go back to the committee? Or, uh, and recommend something different? Or does the board wish to, uh, look at the, the items to see what, what stages we went through with the committee?
How many plans did the committee come up with?
There were seven or eight different plans, I can remember.
I think we could just leave it to staff to come up with some plan.
Well, and we can bring that back to the, the board. As far as what we, we looked at, uh, you don't, in looking at those, I'm not saying that there's not another option out there, but we, we did exhaust with the, the committee, uh, majority of our options that we, we had.
And I can see why the committee came up with it. They want that percentage to be where it would always be a minority district. It may be more than one. And clear, if you think it clear, then that's the reason. And it may be more than one down the road. Uh, I know Mr. Hummer, William Hummer, won in a district that wasn't minority. And that's the reason.
I don't think minority has anything to do.
Yes, it does. That, we, we came to the board thirty some years ago to make sure, and that Board of Supervisors mapped the district out where it would always be minority.
Well, I have no problem with that. I, I want everybody to be happy.
And if you check back your history, Mr. Hummer.
I put a motion on the floor, waiting for Mr. Tadlock, give me a day.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at the calendar here. To avoid, uh, we have two other night meetings next week. Um, to avoid those meetings, uh, the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, next Wednesday will be the best day.
Or would you wanna go the following way?
Um, I get you other meetings in the week.
Well, I, I would say the, the sixteenth, because whatever we do, um, any modifications to that, we would have to re-advertise. So I wanna try to, to get that in as soon as possible, if, if there are changes. Now, we've held the public hearing. If we maintain it as is, we're in good shape. But, uh, if we make modifications to it, then we would have to re-advertise it at that point.
You're saying the sixteenth, what time?
I would say the sixteenth at five or five thirty.
Five thirty.
Yeah, that's fine.
Take it five or five thirty, DSS meeting. It may go a little bit long.
I got chaste.
Five o'clock.
No, no, I'm.
No, no, I.
I'm, I'm on Zoom, so I got some leeway.
I'm chairman of the DSS, we can get it done.
Whatever, whatever.
Five o'clock, I can live with five o'clock.
All right. Do we have a second? We don't need a second.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
That's the sixteenth, right?
Sixteenth, five P M, Mr. Brown. All right. One second ladies and gentlemen.
Your fingers don't move it so fast. Your fingers don't move it so fast.
No, they don't. All right. Next item is the revision of North Orange County's open order. And that's, uh, Stuart McKenzie. I'll, I'll let you take care of that, Mr. McKenzie.
Yes, sir. Um, the change in the zoning ordinance revision to the, uh, North Orange County's zoning ordinance, chapter one forty-eight dash one fifty-five, solar energy facilities to add a two-hundred-foot setback from the state main gate right of way. The planning commission recommended adding that the two-hundred-foot setback along state main gate roads may be reduced by the Board of Supervisors if the Solar Company institute mitigation measures to prevent vehicles from entering the solar energy facility due to a traffic accident. Um, previously, it had said that we would take a two-hundred-foot setback from the center of the right of way. And this is to clarify that it's from the, the edge of the right of way. Because if it was from the center of the right of way on a four-lane highway, it would be considerably less than two hundred feet. Uh, if it was a wide right of way, say three sixty with a hundred-foot wide right of way, we'd be down to seventy-five feet or something like that if it's a, a very wide right of way. So we wanna clarify, uh, to be consistent with the rest of the zoning ordinance, the edge of the right of way. And it's basically clarification.
All right. Board members got any comments? All right. Any public hearings on it? All right, no other comments? I'll open the public hearing on this. Anyone here tonight would like to comment on this? I have no one on the sign-up sheet. Anybody would like to comment? No? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment on the so, on the solar ordinance? Anybody in the virtual world like to comment? Nobody? All right. I will close the public hearing and the matters before the board.
I move we approve this clarification, or whatever you wanna call it, so that it starts at the edge of the state right of way.
All right. We got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's all the public comments, I mean, all the public hearings we have tonight. The next item on the agenda is a public comment. So anybody here tonight like to comment about anything?
The school board budget is a constant source of interest in the community, especially around budget time. And for many years, I have listened to different groups and different people say, you know, we really would love to see an actual budget, not one that compares the budget of the prior year, the budget ask of the prior year, to this year's budget ask, but one that actually shows the appropriation, what the budget was, what the actual dispersments were, and what the differences between all of those numbers. I did some research, I do a lot of research, and just put together a very simple spreadsheet of information that I got on the web from the Virginia Department of Education or the N E A. I have all my websites saved, so if anybody wants to know where I got it, I can tell you. It's not easily found. Sometimes you have to go searching for it. But what I came up with was, for the past five years, starting with fiscal year two thousand sixteen seventeen and through fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one, the state funding for our public schools in Northumberland County amounted to twenty-nine point one million dollars. And the budget approved by this group for that same period was eighty-nine point seven million dollars. That's a lot of money not to know where it went. We haven't seen a dispersment for the school board in five years. And I know that because I've looked at all the budgets. And so I said, well, what's the recourse here? And I started going through the Virginia code, and I found this. It's state code fifteen point two twenty-five oh four, what budget to show. And the state, in its infinite wisdom, has described what a budget is supposed to look like. And it's supposed to look like this according to the law. Opposite each item of the contemplated expenditures, the budget shall show in separate parallel columns the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the, the aggregate amount appropriated during the preceding fiscal year, the amount expended during that year, the aggregate amount appropriated and expected to be appropriated during the current fiscal year, and the increases or decreases in the contemplated expenditures for the ensuing year as compared with the aggregate amount appropriated or expected to be appropriated in the current year. The budget shall be accompanied by a statement of the contemplated revenue and dispersments, liabilities, reserves, and surplus or deficit of the locality as of the date of the preparation of the budget, and, number two, an itemized and complete financial balance sheet for the locality at the close of the last preceding fiscal year. This applies to school board, because the school board finances are considered a locality. And we haven't seen it. And I wanna know why we haven't seen it. There are ways to get that information that are easy, which is the school board does their budget according to the code. I don't know yet what the redress is if they don't do it according to the code. But citizens of this county don't come to these meetings anymore, and they don't express their frustration anymore because they've been beaten down. They've asked nicely, they've asked nasty, they've written letters, they've made phone calls. Nothing ever changes with the school board budget. I used to run a new business enterprise for a hospital center, and I reported to the Board of Directors. If I had presented that budget as something to be expected to be complete, they would have thrown me out on my butt. That's not the way you do a budget when you have history. When you have a new business plan, you're making a proposal, you're taking a wild guess. But when you have a standing group, like a Board of Education and a school board, that doesn't show you a line item dispersment of where eighty-nine million dollars has gone over the last five years, somebody's not doing their job. I've done a lot of research. I can show you where all these monies flow from. I can't tell you, once they hit this county, where they flow to. And that's what people wanna know. I'm hoping that as the Board of Supervisors, you will find a way to hold the school board's feet to the fire and get that information before you make a final decision on approving that budget. Because basically, you're approving a whole bunch of monies. Because basically you're approving a whole bunch of money without having a clue about where it goes. And that's not right for the county. It's not right for the citizens of this county. And honestly, we don't know whether or not it's right for the children of this county, which is what this is all supposed to be about. This is supposed to be about our children. It's not about pension funds. It's not about raises for teachers. We haven't seen a single metric. We heard tonight that the school population is growing smaller. We haven't heard anything about the budget growing smaller with the decreasing student population, nor have we seen a single metric that's measurable in terms of our children's education. They know all about diversity. They know all about equality. They know all about fifteen different pronouns. But they can't tell time without their phones. And it's time for us as a community to help them, help the children of this community to be outstanding citizens who can think for themselves, think outside of the box, who know how to read and are willing to take leadership roles. Because what we're growing right now in our school system is not those. It's not those things. And we're spending a whole lot of money not to get those things. I'm imploring you as the Board of Supervisors to force this issue and to get this information for the citizens of this county so that we know where this money is going. Because right now we have no clue. And that's the end of my rant. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak on any issue? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, ma'am.
This is Sally Gant Conley. And I'm here on a continuation from last month about the trash. I thank you for the security that we have in the house tonight. But somebody told me last week that they would turn it over to someone about my neighbor's trash next door. She now has another hot dumpster sitting in the driveway that she's not putting that trash in that dumpster. She's throwing it. And says the March wind is blowing all the paper and whatever is blowing in my yard. And I have to take my blower and blew it back in her yard. Because I'm not hoping to recover it.
We're losing the battle right now.
Anybody that I could get in touch with, because I spoke to her about it. And she said, well, I tried to get somebody to take it up. And if I said that I had spoken to the supervisors, she said, if they can get somebody, I'll pay them to do it. But she hasn't done anything. And I was wondering if you could tell me something, somebody to go and see.
We have a name and phone number of that particular person.
I don't know. I I did speak to Mr. Marston about that. He's going to give you his card. If you could reach out to Mr. Marston.
Thank you very kindly.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Anybody else like to comment on anything?
Hi, I'm Troya Haney. I would like to comment on the fact that the email that the school board sent you for their presentation that I came to attend that didn't exist. Will that be made public?
Yes, soon as the school board is going to post it on their.
On their website.
Yeah, their presentation, what they gave will be on their website. That's what I heard heard from Dr. Gates. I mean, Dr. Warrow. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I heard. Now, I don't know when they'll do it. That's 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 in in their timeframe.
Okay. Because I mean, it was a presentation that I thought was supposed to be tonight.
Yeah.
That was just an email sent to just y'all.
It is. Once it's presented as a presentation.
It's it's public information now. It's it's on your website right now. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
And I had another comment about the redistricting. I'm not sure. Y'all don't seem very secure in that. And if you're not very secure in it, don't do it. What's the point? I mean, is there a particular point of redistricting? Everything other than, like you said, political rhetoric? If you're not comfortable, don't do it. I don't see the point in it at this point. You can always do it in later date if things change. That's my two cents. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to comment? No one else wants to comment?
I would. I would like to see us add the second one, move the public comment period up. For these people don't have to sit here all evening and night and say a few words.
I agree.
I mean, if they make that at the beginning of the public hearing at seven o'clock, we can have the public comment period then and again at the end with that.
We need to change our bylaws.
Yeah, I was getting ready to say that. It says bylaws and we can pick that up.
Well, I move that we change our bylaws to follow Ronnie's judgment.
All right. We got a motion. I have a second.
I have a second.
Any other discussion on it?
Yeah, I would do that.
This is this is before the board. All right. Any other discussions in the board? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Okay. You said it twice. No.
No.
It's moving up in front of the public.
Move it up.
To seven o'clock, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Move that up to seven o'clock. All right. Anybody in the virtual world like to comment on anything? All right. If you can put them on, please. Anybody in the virtual world like to comment on anything? All right. We don't have anyone else to comment. I'll entertain a motion to carry over.
I move to carry over to March the sixteenth at five o'clock.
All right.
Yes.
Carry over. Second. All right. Got a motion in second. All those in favor say aye. I'd like to thank everyone for coming here tonight. And have a good evening.